Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, April 10th, 2019 to order. And I'd like to apologize if my voice goes in and out. I'm a little under the weather, but I think everybody is tonight. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes. Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Gamble?
Here.
Mrs. Larson and Mr. Nielsen are excused, and I am here.
Thank you. And the meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For item three, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is community comment. Do we have any community comment tonight? Any community comment? Hearing none? Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is school board announcements. I'd first just like to congratulate our school board election winners, Mrs. Larson and Mr. Sprague, who's in the audience. And then I'd like to thank Mr. Alan Alexandrovich for his two terms of service to the district, the community, and to the school board, and for being clerk, such a good clerk, also taking your last role tonight. Roll call, so, thank you very much. And are there any other announcements? Hearing none. School board calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, April 24th, 2019, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 PM, and a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, May 8th, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. Item eight, reports, presentations, and other school board business. We have 8A, our Countrydale Elementary presentation, Mrs. LaPlante.
Hi, everyone. Hello. This is such an odd place to present. By the way, we had this conversation of who should we be looking at? So where are we? Trying to make connections with everybody here. I'm Shawna LaPlante. I'm the principal at Countrydale Elementary School, and we are going to be talking to all of you today and teaching you a little bit about our Cougar Teams that we have in place and up and running at Countrydale. So I brought some kids with me, and they will introduce themselves in just a little bit. But before they kind of dig in and share with you their take on our Cougar Teams, I want to explain what it is that we're kind of talking about here. So, to begin, this is something that my staff has created as we've been thinking and really reflecting on what's important to us at Countrydale, and really making some connections to our core values within our district. So our focus with our Cougar Teams has primarily been on the act of stewardship. And some of you in the audience might be familiar with our values. Of course, everybody here is quite familiar with our values, but we've been thinking a lot about really how can we build those positive relationships with our students and our community? And we're really thinking about the well-being of everybody within our school community, and how can we teach our kids about these things and about these really, really important beliefs that we have at our school? So one way that we do this is through the use of our Cougar Teams. Last year, we kind of started talking about this with my staff, and it started really at the, on the last day of school when we would have our big field day extravaganza. And we break our kids up into different teams, and they're with kindergarten first all the way up to sixth grade, and our staff is involved. It's fun, and it's crazy, and it's usually rainy or 100 degrees. But the kids don't meet their teams until that last day of school, and the students and the teachers always said, "Gosh, here we're supposed to be a team," but it's like we're working with strangers. So we wanted to revamp that for the years to come, and that's kind of how this Cougar Team came into play. My teachers sat down, and again, you know, that's really one of the great things that I love about our Cougar Teams, is that my teachers, my staff, are very, very much invested in that, and I'm there to support them, but most of these ideas are definitely my teachers and our students, really. So we have two big goals that kind of brought us here today, and that was we know that we want our students to have more adults that they know and that they can trust, more than just their classroom teacher or art music fied. And then we also wanted our students to have more kids and other students that they can know and really trust. And so as we create these activities throughout the year, these are the goals that we always center ourselves on. So, logistically, the Cougar Teams, it's pretty easy. Our students, like I said, we mix them up in different grade level teams, and they have a staff member as their team leader. That staff member is a teacher, is my school psych, it's our educational assistants, really it's anybody who just wants to be involved in this. And our teams meet once a month for about 30 minutes, and we have different activities that each of the teams do, and different themes that we kind of focus on. And aside from those two goals of having more adults and more kids for our students to know and trust, the purpose behind our Cougar Teams is to really extend relationships and foster a sense of community throughout our school. So my students are here today to talk to you about just some of the activities that we have done this year, and to just to really give you a better idea of what it is that we're talking about here. So why don't you guys start by introducing yourself here and then explaining your activity, right? Quick or no, Reina?
My name is Reina Tepner, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Quinn Koff, and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Ella Vanoski, who I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Reina Tepner. Today, I'm going to talk about all of our different handshakes in our area of Cougar Teams. This handshake is not an ordinary way to greet someone. It's a unique set of hand motions that your Cougar Team could share. The group leader of our Cougar Teams have the option to create a handshake. This handshake allows student interaction with each other, along with the kids growing a strong relationship with each other. It grows a team connection before a field day. I learned from this handshake that when you grow a relationship over something for a long time, it creates better teams. I'm going to demonstrate one of my handshakes that I have in my handbag.
Ella, just a little. So like Reina said, one of the first things that we really focused on in the beginning of the year was building strong relationships with our teams, because we had kids from all different grade levels, all different classrooms, all different teachers, and nobody knew anybody. And so a lot of the teams now actually call them like, "Oh, our Cougar Family meets today." So it's really been a very positive thing. And the Cougar handshake, or their particular team handshake, that's just one way that we spent really just getting to know everybody within that group. I know other teams spent time like coming up with a quick little celebration dance. I'm not going to demonstrate that, Reina, tonight. But of course, just a variety of getting to know you games, and then teams have like their own things as well.
Hello, my name is Quinn Koff, and one of these amazing events in Cougar Teams that I'm going to talk about is the Snowflake Project. It was basically a winter project, and then you would hang the snowflakes up to go by Some of the things I learned from this event about each person was their cool designs. They made, well, they made the snowflakes. Another thing I learned was no snowflake is the same, and no Christmas is the same, so they're kind of unique in a good way. Some things I thought that were cool about the Snowflake Project was you could put your imagination together with a partner, and then you could make some like amazing or cool design. This also helps people improve socially, because they are interacting with other people, which is good. That concludes my mini informative.
So for our Cougar Snowflakes activity, like Quinn mentioned, we spent time in the teams talking about like our differences and how we can all work together for the good of our community, but that really brings us to the idea of building our community at Countrydale. And so oftentimes, you'll see at the beginning of our Cougar Team meeting is that the group leaders will lead the students through some sort of a community circle. So it could just be the kids sitting around in a circle, passing some sort of a talking piece around, and then they have maybe a prompt that they have to respond to. And really, it's just kind of, again, something to get the students up moving and talking, interacting with their peers that they probably don't know that well.
Hi, my name's Ella, and one activity that was, that I liked, was the appreciation activity. And the appreciation activity is where students are able to express good things about a person, the Cougar Team teacher picks, and can add on to others' ideas about a person, and it helps teams' relationships grow, because they are working together to make someone feel good. And when you make someone feel good, you feel good. So this helps your relationship between the group. I also learned a lot during this activity, like that kids in smaller grades can look up to me, and it gives me the opportunity to be a leader in setting an example. It gives them the, and it also gives them the opportunity to help others.
So like Ella talked about, another theme that we really focused on was our partnerships. We know that partnerships are really important to our school, as well as our district, and so this is kind of one way for us to show those different organizations how much we appreciate them. We have several partnerships, but then also just really recognizing the great work that other people do within our community. So, and then the last thing that I just want to highlight too, as Ella was talking about, was another great benefit of our Cougar Teams is that it really gives our students and staff an opportunity to be leaders. And not all kids feel or believe that they're leaders, but when they're working at times with students who are younger than them, than them, they have no choice but to stand up and be a leader. So one activity that we do pretty frequently is even just like our reading buddies. And you'll see here, students that are a little bit older might be paired with somebody who's younger, and then they get to read to the younger students and demonstrate their reading abilities and different behaviors that they have, appreciation for reading, but then also giving our younger students that opportunity to pair with somebody who's a little bit older than they are too. So again, just, you know, another awesome opportunity for our students and our staff so that we can all be a part of a better group. And that's it.
I have a question. Do any, I love your activities, they're great. Do any of you bring these home and practice them with your friends or your families? Any of the strategies?
A handshake, sometimes I'll remember it from school and I practice with some of my friends.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So did you arrange for the snowfall today?
That was unfortunate.
The snowflake thing.
Right, right. Well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. And item 8B is the early college credit and Start College Now request approvals. Mr. Volo?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. It's a wonderful day. I was conducting interviews in the high school office, and I couldn't see across 51st Street, which I knew it meant we had some great weather, when I could not see the parking lot or the houses. What you'll find today is, again, pursuant to the state programs, our students request to take courses beyond the curriculum that we offer, and those courses are presented here. There are four courses in this list, and the students have already been told this, that would not meet the criteria for the early college credit or Start College Now program, because we do offer a comparable course that student could take on our campus. So, you know, to be clear, that is the criteria we look at annually when we approve or deny and we accept these courses for credit. And in most every case, with some small exceptions, there are things that go beyond the scope of our curriculum. So looking at students who've taken math and will take, you know, math far beyond our high school, or as you can see, specific areas of courses that we just don't offer. So with that being said, I know you can see the listed courses, the applicants are numbered by application. This also includes a request for the summer term as well in one case. That's not called out separately, but I believe application 11 is for a summer application, as I recall. Yes, Alan?
So application one is an individual who is applying for four different courses?
Correct. They apply for courses and alternates, and they apply for more. In one case, for example, applicant nine, applicant nine cannot take that many courses in one semester. If you add them all up, I mean, that's, I mean, 35 credits or whatever it is. That being said, the student really has some strong ideas of what they want to do, and they're trying to basically cover, if you look, it's almost the entire upper level math, you know, catalog. So those 300 foreign level math classes, they have their choice, and again, they'll be able to sign up what fits in their schedule. And I can tell you that some students, that's part of their career plan or academic plan to finish, complete, and just keep taking things kind of beyond our walls.
Is this approval then just for the next semester in summer?
This is for summer and fall. It's our first summer applicant, at least, since I'm at Franklin. So it's for the summer term and then the fall term. The fall, or excuse me, the spring applications come in before October 1st. And all these are obviously, the state can at any point sort of change these programs as they rebranded them last year, early college credit and Start College Now, but this is the program that we have as it is.
Just a question about, you know, first semester Chinese. I mean, we have first semester language offering, so any language that we don't offer is eligible? Do we have a first, you know?
We have a high school, I mean, if the high school first, you know, high school level one being equivalent of first semester, that would require like some syllabus analysis to say if it's equivalent of a college first semester course versus level one that you would take at a high school. That being said, Chinese is not a language that we offer. So it's not comparable to say that, take French, or excuse me, German, Japanese, or Spanish. And there are options within, you know, part-time open enrollment, we could, you know, push the student to as well, however, we do not offer first semester Chinese.
So, go ahead.
How much does this cost us?
The per credit cost, I'd have to, it's about, I want to say 150, 200 bucks a credit, but then we get some reimbursement from the state based on a pool, if I recall correctly, and that is based on how many total requests there are across the state. So we don't get complete reimbursement based on any singular thing, you know, all applicants in all the schools in Wisconsin, the state usually sets a collective, you know, set amount of money that then it disburse to school districts, you know, in a prorated way.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the early college credit and Start College Now request approvals for summer and fall 2019 as presented. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gamble, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich. Any discussion on the motion?
Just one other question. So these are approvals that we give, they not necessarily take all these courses, right?
Correct.
How many actually get taken?
How many courses get taken? In terms of percentage, I know I can look back and, I don't have the spreadsheet up on my tablet, but most students who are still a full-time student at Franklin High School, who are in something very specific, take, I'd say, one or two courses. We do have students who take more than that, but one or two is typical, because we still have an AB schedule. That's not easy to always work in a Monday, Wednesday class at, you know, EBM or MATC, because their course catalog does not always match, you know, our schedule. So if they want to take very specific things at the high school, and they want to take things at the college, they have to make those gel, and our schedule sometimes doesn't have as much flexibility. And our courses, you know, one day they meet Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the next week they meet Tuesday, Thursday. Our schedule varies a bit. So students do have to make choices, and they can't get everything they want, which is why in many cases they want more than they can take.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item 8C, Academic Excellence Scholarship Recipient Approvals. Mr. Volo?
Yep. So, you know, these are our candidates and our students who would be meeting the criteria of the Higher Ed Aid Board, would be our Academic Excellence Scholars. Based on our student enrollment, we get four such candidates. If they choose to attend a state university in Wisconsin, okay, they would receive this. Notice that as you look, okay, or excuse me, Independent Wisconsin College, Wisconsin Technical College, University, Wisconsin campus, if they go out of state, the other students are able to take advantage of that. So as we look at that list being presented to you, the top four plus those alternates, in many cases, you know, we do occasionally have the alternates who are able to use that scholarship. The scholarship is at $2,250 a year. It's been such since the 1990s, has not increased, although tuition has gone up. And oftentimes, these same students do qualify for other scholarships based on their success across this and in many other ways, across their experience. These are great students, each and every one of them. I mean, they're tremendous.
We get a few that do turn it down and go out of state.
Yes, yeah, we can't keep them all in state, but hopefully they come back once they graduate.
So I'm looking, this is 2019, correct?
Yes.
Obviously, yeah. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Academic Excellence Scholarship Recipient Approvals for 2019 as presented. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then item 8D, the Technical Excellence Scholarship Recipient Approvals. Mr. Volo?
So this is interesting, and also through the Higher Ed Aid Board criteria, this one really speaks to a student who, as you notice, not only has semester credits earned in career technical education courses, right, but also must have post-secondary plans related to that. So we look at this, you know, like the first memo that you just approved regarding students, you know, those students traditionally go on a four-year journey, right, the Academic Excellence Scholars. These scholars, you know, may, okay, attend any Wisconsin Technical College system, which is a great post-secondary option. And what this really represents is that other part of, you know, being ready, and, okay, a career pathway that's every bit as relevant as four-year college, and in many ways, you know, a great path for our students. So these students are the ones who've taken advantage of all those offerings in our CTE courses and see that as their future. And again, $2,250 per year isn't enough, however, it is what the state provides, and again, these students will have great, great futures.
This is the third year for this, correct? Or is it the third year? Yeah. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the Technical Excellence Scholarship Recipient Approvals for 2019 as proposed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski, any discussion?
Just want to clarify, so it's four years, even though they might be pursuing a two-year degree, right?
So we look, this one is, excuse me, six semesters or three years, sorry. So when you look at that, and they can take a gap year. So they could choose to not go to school right away out of school, out of high school, and then they can elect to resume it then a year post-graduation. And then they get, again, six semesters.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Volo.
Thank you.
Item 8E is the Health and Dental Insurance Renewal. Mr. Milzer?
Yes, tonight we have our insurance consultants with us, Rayon Bowdre and Alex Bowdre, Kelly Jagelsky from Horton. We've worked with them on the health and dental insurance renewal for next year, and they are going to go over that information.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening. It's a little nerve-wracking going after those Cougars. They were. So.
What's the handshake?
So we have a few pieces of information to go over with you tonight, explaining kind of where we've been in the past, and then how we got to where we are, including with our formal recommendation. So I'm going to start with the medical rate history sheet that was in your packet. It's the landscape sheet that's got the really small print. And the purpose of this document is just to remind us all where we've been, going back to our July 1st, 2015 renewal. And remarkably, we, as, when I say we, the district has not had a renewal increase that was ever larger than trend in the last five years, which is remarkable. Trend in our industry is anywhere between eight to 10 percent, depending on who you ask. So the fact that we have not had a renewal larger than 5 percent, including where we're sitting tonight, is really incredible. I wish I could tell that story to all my clients. We have made some plan design changes along the way, and those are all outlined there. And really, the last, the last two years since we've had renewals with Humana, a great deal of why we haven't had large increases is due to the GO365, our wellness participation, and that speaks to a lot to Valley and Jim's efforts to get everybody involved in those programs, because without it, our renewal would have been much higher, and this would have been a much tougher conversation that we're having tonight. So really, great participation on the part of your staff, and it's an awesome story to tell. So now, moving into our executive summary and recommendation, I just want to pull out some highlights. Our loss ratio for the last year, our last plan year, was 93.15 percent. Just to put that in a little bit of perspective, 85 percent is generally the break-even point for a fully insured medical carrier. So while Humana's not losing money, they're not necessarily making money any, either. So with that trend being an eight to 10 percent, on top of having a slight, slightly high loss ratio, we were looking at a renewal of 16.65 percent out of the gate. The, one of the main drivers with that is we did have a substantial number of large medical claims. We had 17 claimants that had claims over $75,000, which even with a group of our size is relatively high.
And in years, in, in present times, that can simply be somebody taking a major drug once a month. So we can see large claimants over $75,000 just with pharmacy costs alone. So it doesn't even have to be a medical procedure or an inpatient hospital stay anymore. It's really driven a lot by pharmacy.
What percent of the population is the, how many went over $75,000?
Seventeen individuals.
And what percent is that?
It's less than 1 percent, I would guess.
We have about 600 and some belly buttons.
So it's, in insurance, we have an exaggerated 820 rule, and that's true for all of our clients. The people that are at the top end of the claims, it's usually one or two people that are really driving the majority of the claims, and that's what insurance is for. So, the good news is, even with that 16.65 percent rate increase, we got over 10 points of credit for our GO365 participation, so we were able to reduce that renewal without any negotiation immediately down to 6.1 percent. And then we went back, and due to the fact that we have had a good relationship with Humana over the last few years, and they want to keep your business, we were able to negotiate that down to below 5 percent, just at 4.9. Secondarily, in talks with Jim and Valley, the district has expressed a concern with recruiting newer employees, specifically around premium contribution, because that is the price you pay no matter what, even if you use the plan. So we wanted to come up with a different solution to accommodate those individuals as well, because insurance isn't always a one-size-fits-all proposition. So what we did is we came up with a secondary plan, and you can see what that plan design looks like on the other sheet. I'm not going to go through it, but it's, it's got higher deductibles, it has higher copays, it has some different things around the prescription drug plan. But we wanted to still offer a competitive plan, but at a much lower price. And the best way to do that is to further incentivize the GO365 program, to get the employee contribution, if I get to gold status, down to 5 percent. So even though the district would be contributing more for that plan, because their percentage would go higher, it's still a lesser dollar amount. So it's a win-win for both the employee and the district. it's still a lesser dollar amount. So it's a win-win for both the employee and the district. And then it's at 10% for silver, and it would remain at 15 if I don't do anything with the wellness program. So we're still incentivizing the GO365 program, but we wanted to offer a competitive plan that would get people to start to think, you know, do I need plan, our current plan, or can I take the alternate plan at a much lower premium and save and to have more take-home pay? This will lower our initial plan, or our initial offering below the 4.9%. By how much, it's up to how many folks take the new plan. So it's a little hard to predict what the renewal will be, but I can promise that at least one person will take that, and that'll get our renewal below the 4.9%.
I just... Oh, and I, we just want to make it clear that this change in the percentage of premium contribution is only on this new plan.
Yes.
The current plan will stay exactly where it is today, at the, at the 12%, going up to 15 if people do not participate in the GO365 program. So we still want to incentivize the current plan at the current rates. This is just to make the choice a mathematical reality.
Good point. In the fall, we are planning on doing a full self-funded versus fully insured analysis. So we want to look at that. We were contemplating doing it this year, and it's just the timeframe became too short to get it rolled out properly, if that was going to be a valuable option. So we are going to start that process immediately in the fall, so that we have enough time to really dive in, look at all the components of a self-funded program, because there's a lot more decisions that the district would have to make if we move that direction. So we want to do it right, so we will start that process in the fall. The dental plan, Humana has offered a 5% renewal increase with a two-year rate guarantee. The dental plan has run relatively smoothly over the years. Dental trend is in that 2% to 3% range, so to get a 5% offer over the course of 24 months, we thought was very fair. So we are recommending that we renew with Humana as well at that time. The vision plan is in a rate guarantee that is also a plan that is fully funded by the employees. So there's nothing new with that plan for 2019, 2020. So we also recommend renewing with Humana at that time.
Before you make your formal recommendation, just one other point on the dental plan. We hadn't had a rate increase. We had to have a four-year rate guarantee with Humana, so this is the first rate increase over the last several years with them, and this is again, as Alex mentioned, for two years. And he was mentioning that it's a little bit stressful to be following the cougar teams. It's also a little bit stressful following the mathematical people who are going to give a scholarship, because clearly 17 people is more than 1% of 650 bodies. So we're, it's probably roughly around 4-point-something percent of the people were the, were the large claimants.
4.2.
Okay, thank you.
I went to law school, not math school, so... That's what I tell everybody. So to conclude, before we, before we take any questions, we are recommending that we take the 4.9% rate increase with no plan changes to the current plan. However, we are recommending that we offer the new plan with the new rate structure with the GO365 program to further get that renewal down, while also encouraging and helping out with the attention and attraction piece of human resources. The only, I should back, back up one, one step. We are changing one benefit. We are reducing the telemedicine copay, which is currently $20, down to zero. It is not costing us any dollars, so it's an increased benefit, and we want to encourage people to use the appropriate level of care where it makes sense. So with that, I will turn it over for any questions or comments.
I have a question on your, the medical renewal comparison sheet.
Yes.
Two questions, actually. On the enrollment side, I know we asked this before, so I want to ask it again. You, does Humana offer a...
Like a middle tier?
No, the spouse plus...
What I would call a middle tier, yes. So it's like an employee plus one.
Yeah, employee plus one.
They do. However, the people, when you add a middle tier, the single rate's going to go up, and the family rate's going to go up. So the only winners are going to be whoever falls into that middle category, because at the end of the day, Humana's betting that they need just under $8 million to run your health plan. They will carve it up as many ways as you want, but they're, at the end of the day, going to get $8 million. So whenever you add that middle tier, the only winners are those middle-tier folks.
And when we analyze your data, if we start looking at those that are spouse-only, it's a little bit different for single parents with, with one dependent. But if we start analyzing your data, the employee plus spouse are usually larger users of the plan. So to, you know, if you think about it, if you think about routine-type charges, think of a family, a couple of 30-year-olds with some little children, the, you know, and that now take two 50-year-olds, and think of even just their routine stuff, colonoscopies versus a couple of wellness checkups, we start to just be larger users as we get a little older.
And then one other one on, on the Medicare. Are we required to offer Medicare to retiree? I'm assuming this is to retirees. And, and we do have some, I'm sure, that are...
Sure.
On Medicare that are current employees. But are we required to offer it?
We are, we're not, we're no longer required to offer it. We did have some people that were vested in a benefit, so that they had potentially maybe eight years at one point in time where they could continue the health insurance through the district. That may make them, either they or a dependent that spouse, maybe under 65, so they remain on the plan throughout that particular term, and then they're both off. I know in recent years, we've made it so that they have their years that they get that they're still eligible for based on their contract and contractual agreements, but typically those now are ending at 65. So this will continue to drop, and the special Medicare with prescription drugs are, that classification is truly for those who are vested longer term.
Okay, thank you.
Have we ever considered a spousal carve-out?
Not to my knowledge.
Is there a reason, why not?
We talked about it in the last few years.
We have talked about it. From our, our book of business, we don't have any school districts that offer it. Not that that's necessarily a reason not to do it, but from a, from a recruiting standpoint, I think that would make it slightly higher. We could do a cost analysis. The toughest part of doing a cost analysis is, we don't know how many of your spouses work or, or don't work, and those types of things. So we'd be making some assumptions.
I also will, will just say for the record that you're not going to typically get rid of spouses that have high-cost claims or disabling medical conditions, because typically they are not working, at least not full-time. So we...
No, and that's not the intent. It's...
Right.
The intent is just to spread the wealth, so to speak, with other employers...
Correct.
Versus having a richer plan with lower deductibles and lower copays and lower premium to have them all in our plan versus, you know, the other.
And we may have an opportunity with the second plan to draw some of those folks out, too.
So currently, there's a tier, 12 and 15%, depending on your participation in the...
12, 13, and 15.
12, 13, 15. And how's that, what's the spread there? Are they getting, are they all at the lowest end, or typically?
Well, as a whole, we had, I believe, over 70% of our folks, Kelly, do you have the numbers? I think we had like over 70% that at least reached silver. So we do have a lot of participation, which is why we got the 10% reduction. So really great engagement.
I think the average premium contribution currently was at about 13%.
Right.
So between, they're between silver and gold and platinum.
Should we get their attention?
Yeah, in the current plan, we have 192 people that are at the gold or platinum, which is the 12% contribution level. We have 52% at silver, which is the 13%, and then we have 79 people that are at the blue or the bronze level.
Jim, so what is that dollar amount that is, that is obviously offsetting this $8 million? What is the dollar amount that's collected in premiums, and not premiums, in the employee premium throughout the year?
Kelly, do you have that?
Again, roughly, that's going to be, I don't know that I have a set dollar amount, but that's going to be...
So it'd be 13% of the $8 million.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Duh. Now that I think of it. Don't need a calculator for that one.
So are, you see a lot of plans yet that still have 100% co-insurance? Is that pretty rare, or what does that look like in the market?
It's no longer as rare as it used to be. Essentially, as deductibles have gotten larger, co-insurance has, has sort of remained flat. And when you look at school district analysis, in particular in southeastern Wisconsin, what you find with the deductibles is that a lot of folk, a lot of districts are backfilling those with health reimbursement accounts or some contribution to health savings accounts. This is not a health savings account compatible plan. This still will have first-dollar office visits and some first-dollar, I mean, there's prescription drug copayments, but we wanted people, those younger folks or the newer people who might just be newer to teaching, newer to school district work, we wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity to take care of those more everyday sorts of things for themselves and their family members.
Can a fully insured plan be HSA-eligible?
Yes.
It can be.
Mm-hmm. It just has to...
Why didn't we go, why didn't we go with a full, with a HSA-eligible option for the third, or for the, for the second choice and HSA component?
The, the reality is, is that we were looking at this, the second, the addition of the second plan was truly to make sure that people still had access to healthcare that they could have, that was affordable, and that the district was able to set a premium contribution that would be in keeping with those newer-level salaries, for lack of a better term. So it was, it was on purpose. We looked at HSA-compatible plans. We felt like with the mandatory teacher reductions or staff reductions for the, you know, the 403B, the just different pensions, et cetera, that we wanted to make the premium contribution affordable, along with having the plan have absolute safeguard, so that people wouldn't skimp on care.
I really like that, the alternate plan. I think that will be really attractive.
What's the threshold for high deductible plans, though, as far as?
1,400, I think. It goes up every year by like 50 bucks. I think it's 1,400, single, 2,800, family, and everything must track towards a deductible. So like the alternate plan, the deductible's high enough.
Yeah, I've run, I've run those, but on the self-insured arena.
And just to your other question, Mr. Lewis, the, the 10% premium reduction from, from GO365 was also worth $760,000 to the district. So the efforts, I think we've, the, the value-added cost, so if we looked at that, if we pulled GO365 out and self-funded it, for lack of a better term, was about $100,000 to keep or save 760. So it was a, it's a fairly good offset, and the, the efforts by the district to make sure people are engaged and have opportunities to engage have been, have really helped a lot over the last several years.
This is for one year, right?
Yes.
One year.
It's much, much harder to get two-year rate guarantees in our world, unfortunately.
What was the health trend this year?
So it all depends on who you ask. According to PWC, which looks at major corporations and just across the board, it was like 5.5%. If Humana were here, I think they told us like 9, 9% in their book of business, so...
And I would also suggest that depending upon if you pull medical out, you're going to get, have, if you pull medical apart from pharmacy, you're going to have two very different numbers. Medical will be that lower, maybe 3 to 6 if you really take a look at it, but pharmacy is probably somewhere between the 15 and 21%, depending upon your ratio of specialty to generics and that sort of thing.
They're never pulled out. They're always looked at together.
Right.
And Lynda, your question about that 100, you said 100%.
I'll be co-insured, yeah, I understand. Yeah, figured it out.
Oh, because you can find it on doa.wisconsin.gov. They list all the school districts, but... So, so I'm look, I'm looking for a motion to approve the health and dental insurance renewal as presented. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your work.
Thank you.
Next, we have item nine, School Board Liaison Reports, 9A Personnel and Policy, Policy 5420, Appropriate Use of Seclusion and Restraint. Dr. Milner.
Great, thank you. I have reviewed this policy with Mr. Nielsen, and he has identified that he supports the policy as presented. So just as a backdrop, this policy's here tonight because of its age, and really some things that we felt needed to be clarified, particularly in the administrative rules. So Ms. Preman is the individual who made the revisions to the policy, so she is here and willing to answer any questions you might have about it at this time.
I have, I reviewed the policy, and I, I have one recommended addition. I don't know what the board or, or you will think. Well, first I want to ask, are the changes, you know, this was on our list to be reviewed because it was old, but is it also partially being reviewed because of the Department of Education compliance checks coming up, too? I mean, are some of the changes you did because of that?
So the changes that were made were done to better align current policy with Act 125. There were some discrepancies in the way the policy was interpreted that do not completely align with the requirements of the law.
I thought they were thoughtful changes, but I would, after going over the policy, I would like to suggest that the addition of the word confidential to either the title, Confidential Documentation and Reporting, or to the first line, will complete a confidential written report down for you list, Documentation and Reporting, only because up in the body of the policy, where you, where it's stricken that the summary log of seclusion and restraint will be kept on a clipboard, which I didn't like that, but it says it will be confidential. There's nothing in your new language under Documentation and Reporting that talks about keeping it confidential. So I just wanted to know what your thoughts are on that.
That sounds appropriate.
I don't know where you suggest having it, whether it's in the title or in the body.
Okay. No, that, that's an appropriate recommendation.
So you're the professional, so...
And because it's in the rules, we'll, we'll kind of take a review of that and make sure we're putting it in the right place. I am thinking, just as you mentioned, it, it would suffice to have it in the title, Confidential Documentation and Reporting, but we'll certainly take a closer look at the rules as they're written and make sure that that's clear.
Because in here, someone that's just writing a report could just leave it on a desk or something, and even though you don't, you hope they're not going to do that if...
Right.
If they know it's, they're going to assume it's confidential, but it should be in policy, I think, or...
Yeah, we can add that, that's...
Is that okay with the board?
Makes sense.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any comments?
Just one other question. You did add about, in instance, for non-trained school personnel may use physical restraint. How often does that happen?
Rarely.
But it does?
It can. So, I mean, an example would be a child is running out into the street. You're not going to take time to call a trained individual to restrain that child. So I would advise that they don't.
Okay. Yeah, put that in here, huh?
We do have runners.
Runners, okay. That's for the runners.
It's for the runners, yes.
So then my recommendation was for the rules, so we don't have to make any changes to the approval of the policy then. So I'm looking for a motion to approve revised board policy 5420 as presented. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion on the motion?
Just one thing. So we get the report by September 1st, right? Why September 1st? Is that for the...
Statute.
Statute.
Statute, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Item nine D, Board Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports tonight?
Well, we did get to see the play, some of us.
That's the next item.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. All right, never mind.
We're almost there.
All right.
Okay. Now we'll move to a, I mean, nine C, School and Community Engagement. Mrs. Witkowski.
Yes, the play, the musical. And the name of it was...
The Drowsy Chaperone.
The Drowsy Chaperone.
You can never remember the name of it.
Did you fall asleep?
No. It was still... It was delightful, yes. The man in the chair was pretty good. Wish he had a name. But the performance was wonderful.
I know.
I also, yeah, I also went, and it was tremendous. Having been in both college and high school myself, and I just love live theater, and some of the voices were amazing. And a couple of the individuals had unbelievable comedic timing in their performances. So it was very enjoyable.
I thought the performances were just well above high school level. They were just professional. They really were.
Yeah, they did a good job.
And our facility is amazing. We are so fortunate. Our community provided that facility. Kids have really stepped up.
And how's attendance? Is it sold out, or what's the?
It wasn't sold out on Sunday when I was there.
It wasn't on Friday, either.
But there are five performances, and the theater seats over eight hundred, so I think it'd be tough to sell them all out.
Okay, just gotta have goals, you know.
Yep, absolutely.
And I also saw today that they've been practicing that since December, every day, every day. So that's amazing.
It showed.
Yeah. Any other reports?
Yeah, I also went to the Spring Carnival at Robinwood. And it was a spring carnival. I mean, kids were having a great time.
See some runners?
Yeah, saw runners. Definitely saw runners, but they were all having a good time.
I think those are good fundraisers.
Well, it's actually not a fundraiser. He said they break even. It's more or less just for the enjoyment of the kids and, you know, families, so.
It's important, yeah. Thank you. Then I am, item ten, Closed Session. I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Nineteen Point Eight Five Sub One Sub F to discuss pupils' disciplinary record and recommendation from administration as to the admission of such pupil pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Nineteen Point Eight Five Sub One Sub C to discuss compensation of represented and non-represented staff and for district administrator performance standards evaluation. Do I hear that motion? Motion by Mr. Gamble. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes. Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Whatever. Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
And I say yes.
Motion carries. We'll go into closed session at six fifty-two. We are back into open session at eight thirty-seven. And we do have some action to take from closed session. The first action would be regarding admission of a pupil. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny admission of such pupil discussed in closed session on April tenth, twenty nineteen, under Nineteen Point Eight Five One.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gamble. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? There shouldn't really need to be any. Dr. Miller, do you believe we need a roll call for that? I don't think so, no. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Motion to deny carries. And then the second action would be on compensation for the district administrator. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve two point five percent salary increase for the district administrator effective for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
We have a motion by Mr. Gamble. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes. Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
And I say yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Then we will move on to item eleven, School Board Debriefing. Are there any comments from the board regarding the meeting?
Kids are great.
Yes, that was a.
I, did you notice that the one girl on the left, I was impressed with her. She was the first one that spoke. But when the other kids got through reading their little spiel under her breath, she was telling each one of them, "Good job." You know, she was supporting her classmates, which I thought was really cool.
That's what they're teaching them over there, so that means it's working. I guess we'll have to have a board handshake. That was good. Yeah, and I guess I could've said this during our last motion, but I want to thank you for the good job you do, Dr. Miller. We really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
So, yeah. Future agenda items. Item twelve, we have Friends of Franklin recognition on April twenty-fourth. And the next few items are board reorganization. The board officer elections, April twenty-fourth. Designation of district depositories, April twenty-fourth. Designation of newspaper record, April twenty-fourth. Appointment of CISA One Annual Convention Delegate, April twenty-fourth. And then National School Board Convention Reports, April twenty-fourth. And then the new principal and associate principal introductions, that will be April twenty-fourth.
Hopefully, April twenty-fourth, right?
That could change.
So we're interviewing on the seventeenth, so make a decision, reference checks. We're hoping to bring the new principal in.
For Southwood Glen?
Correct, for Southwood Glen. We've already hired the associate principal at the middle school, so I'd like you to meet both of them, hopefully, at the same time on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, great. Then we have the Tobacco Poster Winner presentation on May eighth. Then Franklin Elementary School presentation, May eighth. Social Emotional Learning presentation, May eighth. And then a four-K program update, May eighth. And item thirteen, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at eight forty-one PM.